And the Democrats.
I know.
You're looking at a fifth in the shop.
Yeah, that church bike.
Bike in the six and five.
Unlike.
Yeah, when I went.
Where do you go?
I went to the one that Mark was.
Oh.
But I don't even know where.
No, okay.
I don't even know where.
Nonpartisan, but the Republican Party.
But it was only like 1200 or 1300.
Oh, wow. How, 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 how much?
Where do you want me to be, LDM, if I can make my grand entrance? Thank you. I am so.
It had been up for a while. Sixteen hundred?
Sixteen.
Oh, wow.
Meeting's ordered. Welcome to the October eighth, two thousand nineteen Planning Commission meeting. Please stand for a moment of silence and reflection. All right, at the beginning of every regular Planning Commission meeting, we allow time for comments from anybody from the public that wants to come up and speak for up to three minutes on anything that is not on the agenda. So if we have anybody who wants to come forward, please come forward now. All right, seeing none, we'll move on to the agenda. So before we get started, I wanted to just make an announcement about the order of the agenda and the way we're going to process it today. We'll start with the committee reports. So Cottage Court and the South Saunders PD. Then we'll move to new business, the two items there, and then we'll do old business. So just wanted to give everybody a heads up about that. So let's start with a report from the Text Change Committee on Cottage Court.
Good morning, everybody. On our September seventeenth meeting, we talked about three different issues with text change, TC six eighteen Cottage Courts, TC one D eighteen Omnibus, and TC seven nineteen Infill subdivisions and recombinations. Today, I'll be talking, giving a brief summary on Cottage Courts TC six eighteen. We reviewed and made several changes to the section, text changes to the section of UDO that governs Cottage Courts. Cottage Courts basically are rarely used in Raleigh. It changes recommended, address several various barriers to Cottage Courts and Cottage Courts uses. Recommended changes include increasing permanent densities and permitting the creation of individual fee simple lots as an option. And considering the housing affordability issue in Raleigh, we also talked about reconsidering the total square footage of individual lot units and co-housing options as well as Cottage Courts. Lastly, we talked about amending zoning standards for the common courtyard area and different options for stormwater infrastructure in the common area. We made a motion to approve and to move to the full Planning Commission, but we want to hear from staff on some additional items that were part of the changes for Cottage Courts. And I think Keegan McDonald, if you can. There were some outstanding issues with the motion that we made for Cottage Courts, if there were any.
Those were retaining walls and about the end unit facing the street.
Yeah, yeah, so I have a pretty detailed PowerPoint if we, if there's some other issues, but I can jump into kind of the things that were left in balance after the last Text Change Committee meeting.
Yes, please, let's do that.
Skip ahead through the PowerPoint presentation. So to touch on the first one, it was related to retaining walls. That we received comment in the Text Change Committee meeting that there was some concern about retaining walls within the courtyard area, specifically that they would make it, they could potentially make it unusable. So there were previous restrictions that were brought up related to stormwater devices and wet ponds and dry ponds being located in the courtyard. But the, the topic of retaining walls was not specifically addressed. So we sat down and received some comment from the public and took their feedback and came up with the regulation that you see there, the second bullet point. So first, first part of this restriction would be that retaining walls may be no taller than four feet in height if they're located within the courtyard. The second qualifier is related to spacing. So the standard spacing would be twenty feet distance between any two retaining walls, and that actually mirrors requirement that any, the minimum dimension requirement for space to be counted as, as the courtyard would be, is twenty feet by twenty feet. So that mirrors that requirement. And the spacing would be reduced if the height of the retaining walls were reduced. So retaining walls that are less than two feet in height could be spaced as close as ten feet apart. Two feet more falls in line with a seating wall, four feet probably slightly uncomfortable to sit on. And that four feet also parallels the requirement, once you get above four feet, there's engineering specifications and building permit specifications that come in with that. So we, we thought that was a good, happy medium. So this is the requirement we came up with. And within the ordinance, it's located in section twelve amongst the other requirements and restrictions for the courtyard.
And the end units having.
Yeah, the end units. So this was something else that came up about how we could potentially strengthen the requirement that end units provide a street-facing entrance. So the way the requirements are written now, the end units of a cottage court, those that address the primary street and that sit kind of on the edge of the site, are required to either provide a street-facing entrance or a porch. We brought this question to our internal Text Change Review Committee meeting, where we also had our legal team present to provide some commentary and feedback. And what we came across was that there's a general statute, you can see the reference listed there, that prohibits cities from regulating building design elements for one and two family dwellings. And within a cottage court development, of course, primarily we're looking at detached houses, there's also the possibility for attached homes or maximum two-unit townhouses. So both would qualify as we understand it within one and two family dwellings. And we're really restricted in terms of architectural requirements that we can place on the building design. And it's our opinion that we came to as a group that either a street-facing entrance or really a porch for that matter are architectural elements that we could receive some kind of pushback, and it's a legally dubious area. And so the recommendation would be actually to delete that requirement. As it stands now, you know, we were looking to strengthen it, but upon that, upon further research, we found that it's just not something, I don't think the staff feels comfortable keeping, or continuing to regulate. So TC six eighteen, as it's drafted now, would actually delete that requirement.
All right, thank you. And there were some clarifying of certain texts that we were asking for as well. Do you recall?
Yeah, so there was one clarification. I don't have it in the slides, but I can point to the section of the code, or section of the ordinance, excuse me, it's section eight. There was one clarifying, or clarifying piece there. This relates to buildings slash structure setbacks in relation to the periphery of the site. One of the changes with TC six eighteen is that Cottage Courts can be subdivided into fee simple lots, which previously they all had to be contained on one lot and for purposes of how we do review one site. And so this change would introduce fee simple subdivision or allow it in this instance. And what we did with section eight is specify that those setbacks apply to the site boundary. The only real setback that needs to be adhered to on the interior of the property, so from one Cottage Court lot to another, would be the separation of a minimum six-foot building separation and a minimum three-foot separation from the interior lot line. But as related to the periphery, what you see listed in section eight there are the setbacks that would, that would hold. And those more or less mirror the base zoning district. While we're on that section, I did want to note in our internal review meeting, the subject of infill was brought up, infill applicability. And while I was not here at the inception of the UDO nor the infill rules, I did ask, you know, for those with some background knowledge on the subject. And the current interpretation is that infill rules don't apply to Cottage Courts. There's actually not a cross-reference contained in this section like there is for the other sections of the code for conventional development option. And so that's the kind of standing interpretation, but Development Services asked while we're working on this to kind of memorialize it in a more explicit fashion, which is why you see that red subtext underneath section eight. They would basically just call out that the infill rules don't apply to Cottage Court developments. And ultimately, I think this is something that could be addressed within two-two-seven as well, which is the general section where infill rules are laid out. To have both, I think, would strengthen it in the long run, but choosing to address it here while we have the text change before us.
I believe that since we've heard this so many times in Text Change Committee that we don't need to hear the whole.
I would recommend, you might not want to hear the whole presentation from staff, but you would still need to open it up for, for public hearing. Is that clear, how much you want to hear from staff?
Does the commission feel like we need to hear the whole staff presentation before we move forward? Anybody feel like we need to? Okay, you have questions for staff? Okay. So we're going to forego the presentation and we'll start into having questions.
Okay.
On a fee simple basis, that's going to create a planned unit development on the part of this little plot, because you've got a common area, I would guess. I don't know how else the homeowners, almost, it would be creating a homeowners association in order to take care of the common area, which means that there's going to be a planned unit development associated with this on a small basis. And I'm, so my question is, what does that start to create? Any conflicts of what we've got here and what that could result in?
This actually is no different than any other traditional subdivision with common elements. So there would be the creation of some sort of collective homeowners association to maintain those common elements, but that's true in any residential subdivision in the city of Raleigh.
Okay, I just didn't know whether any requirements of that could affect what we've got here in the tech, whether there would be any conflicts between the two, if we're okay on all that.
Nothing, nothing springs to mind, and you know, the, in the original Cottage Court proposal where the, the land would be owned in common.
Right.
And the, it'd be condoed. It would be a similar situation, it's just that instead of an HOA, it would be a condominium owners association.
I just wanted to make sure that we weren't, there wasn't a conflict between the two when it moved forward, that's all.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? All right, well, I believe the city is the applicant here. So is there anybody who wants to speak in support? You have ten minutes, two minutes per person. If anybody would like to speak in support, please come forward. Please remember to state your name and address when you come to the podium.
My name is Stuart Cullen in at three-ten Heck Street. I just wanted to say that I felt like the process that involved staff as well as the development and building community and kind of expressing what we felt like originally set forth in the UDO was kind of economically not feasible, which is why they've never been built, or they built one time and to, you know, mixed review. But wanted to just mention, I think at the last meeting, we talked a lot about the economics of house size and that the majority of, of costs and line items in a building budget at some of these smaller scales are fixed, things like, you know, or predominantly fixed, like foundation, roofing, HVAC, kitchens, appliances, stairs, things like that are sort of more or less fixed costs, and the number of variable costs are quite low. And so just wanted to, you know, mention that again as you kind of, you know, talk at all about house size and just wanted to generally say, I feel like where we're at today seems to be like an economically feasible solution for the Cottage Court. Thanks.
Thank you.
Stuart, you said it is, so eighteen hundred square feet, you're okay with that?
We felt like that, that was the point at which the economics really work. And that, while there might be some smaller houses out of choice, that's where a family, you know, can afford, and that's a house size that families want. And when you look at what the builders are building at the smaller scale, they're all around that seventeen fifty, eighteen hundred, that's just where the economics start to make sense, and that the cost of a fifteen hundred square foot house is nearly the same as an eighteen hundred square foot, square foot house because of the, a lot of the high fixed costs associated with construction.
Thanks, hi.
Jason Meadows, one oh three Stone Lane, Clayton, NC. So I just wanted to come in front of all of you. We've, we've been at a couple of Text Change Committee meetings, and we've also had, I guess in all about a half a dozen meetings, whether it be on the, the development community side and then back with the Text Change Committee. But I was the project manager with John Edwards and Company that did the original Fillmore Cottage Court. So I'm now out kind of on my own, but doing some interesting things in Raleigh as a whole. But I wanted to talk specifically about, you know, I kind of humbled myself to, to be able to come to some of these meetings and understand exactly what the goals were. You know, that was kind of the first and only Cottage Court in Raleigh. And I think we learned a lot as a city and as well as a development community. But all of the language that we've, we've got in this text change now, I think, is, is a way to provide opportunities for more of these to be constructed in Raleigh. We talked more about Wilmington and other places, and actually Wilmington is doing none of these currently with their current regulations. So I did reach out to them and talk to them about some of their concerns when they went through their adoption as well. And really, I think, as Stuart mentioned, the home size is key. The height that we had problems with at Fillmore, that was, that was a struggle. The courtyard and the stormwater, I think, you know, the Fillmore Cottage, a lot of the stormwater amenity is within the courtyard that may make it less usable. So I think we've headed the right direction with the current language. So as a whole, we're pretty excited about this opportunity. I think this is going to, you know, trigger some Cottage Court development in Raleigh, and I appreciate everyone's time getting us to where we are.
Thank you. And thank you for your participation in this conversation, both of you. Anybody else here to speak in support? Anyone here to speak in opposition? Let's bring it back to the table. What's your pleasure?
Just wanted, excuse me, make a comment. I think there was some extensive conversation about how to accommodate affordable housing within these types of developments. And I know that it's not necessarily to be written into the text change, but when this goes before council, maybe useful just to express our concerns and also desires to help support that type of development and to maybe provide expedited review timeframes or something like that as an incentive to support the aspects of a project that are affordable.
So you're suggesting that as part of the recommendation that we suggest that council look at expedited review for projects that include affordable housing?
Correct.
Okay.
That's actually already a pending topic of discussion at a council committee.
Perfect, thank you.
Would that be limited to Cottage Courts, or would it apply to any typology?
Any type, I, I would, would say any typology, but, well, but while we're specifically talking about this to take the opportunity to focus it on the Cottage Court. The other, the first, your question is for, maybe for another discussion.
So when you make that motion, you could add that. So any further comment or questions or discussion?
Just like to say, I appreciate the work of the Text Change Committee on this. This has been six months, I think, of consideration, very detailed analysis. I like the stormwater outcome with the courtyards. I like the fact that the Cottage Courts are now by right in R four. I think that makes a lot of sense. And I think hopefully we will see this option used much more in the city. So I'm, I'm very happy with the outcome here.
So let's entertain a motion.
Well, I'll move to approve the text change then.
Second.
So.
You need to provide the support for your.
Right, for this one, you're just commenting on consistency with the comprehensive plan. And if you wanted to add Tika's recommendations as well.
All right, well, yes, so I recommend approval of TC six eighteen. It is, I think, fully consistent with a comprehensive plan, helps meet our affordable housing goals, and should fit well with our, with our neighborhood conservation goals as well. So that's a motion.
You want to?
Could we also add a recommendation that council continue to look into ways to help support affordable housing specifically with the Cottage Court? And perhaps considering ways to expedite the review process for projects that incorporate affordable housing.
Yes, thank you.
So amended.
That's a better motion.
Motion so amended, so.
Second.
All right. Any further conversation? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? No. All right, so, thank you. And moving on, we're going on to the report from the Committee of the Hall.
Okay. Z thirty-two eighteen, South Saunders Plan Development. We initially met, or initially came before the Committee of the Hall on August twenty-second, then came back to the Committee of the Hall on September twenty-sixth. We reported the case out to full commission without recommendation. And the applicant has requested that we defer the case until the October twenty-second Planning Commission meeting to work out some further details.
So I understand that the applicant has asked for a deferral. I missed that if you said it.
Yes.
So. All right. So I think we can just choose to have a deferral.
Yeah, I think your practice has benefited the request of the applicant. You just defer if it's, if they have any opposition to it, then you guys vote on it.
All right. All right, so I don't believe we have any opposition in the audience. If we have anybody, raise your hand. Okay, so then we'll just table it for two weeks and pick it back up in two weeks. All right, so as I said at the beginning of the meeting, I'm going to reverse the new business and old business, because I think we're going to have more people from the public here for new business, and we're going to move on to Glenwood Avenue. So who from staff is presenting that?
Good morning. Fast forward a bit here. This is TC Z three dash nineteen, and the address is thirty-eight hundred Glenwood Avenue. This is a text change to amend the conditions associated with zoning case Z sixty-seven dash oh five. The property is located, as you can see from the map here, off Glenwood Avenue, just south of the, of the Beltway, Beltline, excuse me. There are seven conditions that can currently govern the subject property. These conditions generally regulate use, number, size, and height of buildings, reimbursement of right-of-way dedication, planted street yard, and residential density. The, the applicant is requesting to modify only one of these conditions, and that would be condition B, and that relates to the tenant, tenant space size limitation. The current condition places a limitation of three thousand square feet on any individual tenant space for an institutional, institutional civic service, commercial, or recreational use. This is how the condition currently states. It's, again, it specifies what the, the size requirements, the square footage can be for any individual space. As revised, the only thing, it would, it would remove that last line of that, and it would remove that one limitation on the size. Essentially, you would be just striking that, that, that final sentence in that condition. So just to give you a comparison of one, the existing to the proposed. So it would, would be removing the exemption of the bank use at a maximum of five thousand square feet in size in the, in the hotel with or without a bar lounge use, and no individual institutional civic service, commercial, recreational use would exceed three thousand square feet. This would give the applicant, the flexibility that they're looking for in filling these tenant spaces. They can give you, provide a little bit more detail on that if that is necessary. This application was presented to the Glenwood CAC on September twenty-third, and they took a vote on it, and it was approved unanimously by a vote of seven to zero. Again, they're just modifying the one, one condition on this, this property. Staff is available for any questions.
Any questions for staff? All right, let's bring up the applicant who has ten minutes, along with any people in support.
Good morning. I've got some copies to pass out, which I just dropped on the floor. Can you pass those out, Mark? Thank you. My name is Isabel Maddox. I'm here today on behalf of Grub Ventures. Here with me today are Sam Crutchfield and Mackenzie Wilson of Grub Ventures. This prop, this zoning case affected two properties, thirty-seven hundred and thirty-eight hundred Glenwood Avenue. One of those properties is developed with, you probably know, the Regions Bank building on the old Coker Office Park as you're headed towards Crabtree going away from town. And they're under construction on the, the other parcel. And, and you can see in your packet that I'm just passing around, there's a picture showing the status of construction as of, in June, back when we started this process. So that's a lot farther along now, so we're, they're really getting, you know, well, well along with this, this construction. As, and I'll, I'll wait for those to go around, but the, the, the condition that we're seeking to change was passed in a zoning case in two thousand and five. At that point, that was pre-UDO, and there was a, a code requirement that said, if you do any retail or restaurants in an O and I district, you're very limited, because the city's view on retail was different than it is now. And, and basically, the condition basically reflected the code that was in effect at that time. And that was not uncommon at the point. Now, the city attorney's office pushes back when you try to do that. They said it's duplicative of a code requirement, but at the time, it was pretty common to repeat a code provision in a zoning case, because it basically gave the neighbors some comfort of what they were getting. So that's all that was. It was a condition that limited the total retail to ten percent of the building and any individual tenant to, to three thousand square feet. So going forward, you know, we're okay with the ten percent of the building. And that stays the same, we can build the same amount of retail either way. And so ten percent, the building that's going up now is a hundred and eighteen thousand And so 10%, the building that's going up now is 118,000 square feet, and so there'll be 11,800 retail they could build in that building. That's not changing. What will change, if this text change is approved, is that rather than having all tenants limited to 3,000 square feet, one could be 4,000, or maybe 5,000. So instead of doing at least four tenants for that space, you could do, I mean, you could do, you know, two or three tenants, bigger spaces. And what the Grub folks have found out in trying to lease up this space as a building is going up, is that there are a lot of tenants, a lot of restaurant tenants, the higher-level restaurants, which want more than 3,000 feet. They've run up against that wall in a number of cases. You know, since the zoning case in 2005, the city has approved a new comprehensive plan, which, you know, really encourages mixed uses, which is what they're trying to affect here in this neighborhood. And they also approved a new UDO, which put mixed-use zoning on almost every property in the city, including these. These properties were remapped from O&amp;I 1 and 2 to OX, OX 7 in this case. So I think there's been a movement in the city to push a little bit harder for mixed uses, and this will give them a little more flexibility in their leasing. So again, we're not increasing the total amount of retail, so it won't have any negative effect on parking. Parking stays the same. Traffic, traffic generation will stay the same. And density stays the same. The building is under construction, so the same amount of impervious is going to be done, whether you approve this or not. So there's really no, to me, there's no real downsides to this. It just gives the property owner a little more flexibility in their leasing. You know, again, as Mark said, the council approved us going forward with this text change on July 2nd. We had our neighborhood meeting, August 21st. One neighbor, we notified everybody within 500 feet, one neighbor came. We had a good conversation with her. And then the Glenwood CAC heard it and voted on it in September, on September 23rd, seven to zero. And so we feel like, you know, we hope that you'll see this as a fairly benign condition, and certainly available for any questions that any of you might have.
Any questions for the applicant? None. All right. What's that?
Seems reasonable.
So, thank you, Ms. Maddox. So is there anybody here to speak in support? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition? All right, let's bring it back to the table. Are we ready to, well, first, is there any conversation?
You know, I think the logic of this kind of limitation 10 years ago was to limit destination retail, but 10,000 square feet is not going to give you destination retail, so I don't have a problem with this.
Any further conversation? Then I'll entertain a motion.
This would be a consistency statement, correct?
Yeah, so it feels like a resoning, but it's a text amendment.
It's right there, babe.
Just one double check, I was going to read the right. Okay, then, I move to adopt the proposed consistency statement dated October 8, 2019, contained in the agenda materials, and to approve the text change to the conditional use zoning.
Do we have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. All right, passes unanimously. Thank you. Let's move on now to the next case at Z 2119 on New Hope Road.
Yes. Good morning. This is a request for just under 60 acres, currently zoned R10, CU, and planned development to CX 5 with conditions. The southeast CAC recommends approval, 17 to 4, that asterisk I'll talk about later, and your deadline is 2020. Sorry for that, but that's how the math works. So this site is partially zoned, PD in an Old Town Plan Development, that pink part. There is still some other remaining part of that plan development on the west side of New Hope Road, which is going to be case Z 22, which I can tell you now is scheduled for two weeks from now. So a bit of a hiccup in scheduling for those two things. And this, the yellow part, the R10 part, was rezoned as part of, when the rest of the land was removed from the PD, and is included in this case too, so I'll go through some of that. So for some historical context, this is the original Old Town PD, so Walnut Creek, pretty nearby, Barrell Elementary. This was the land that was case Z 718 last year. And so now, these are the two cases before you, so you can see that little piece that in the southwest corner of this case today was rezoned to R10. So mostly an interesting factoid for entitlement calculation, not really super pertinent, because nothing has happened on the site since then, but something to keep track of. This is a little bit more of a closer zoom in. You can see the utility easement on the west side of the site. Also, the Stub Street, mentioned in the staff report, is up here. But it's currently vacant, and partially wooded, partially just vacant. Some photos. So this is the, this number two there on the bottom right is the intersection of New Hope and Rock Quarry. So the line is dashed, because the site doesn't follow the road precisely, so it goes back into the trees. Conditions on this case prohibit a number of uses, some higher impact, some for entitlement reasons, so office and medical was a TIA-related thing to reduce entitlement for them. Residential development, limited to 450 apartments, so limited in number and in size, says shall be no more than two bedrooms in any individual unit. And non-residential, all other uses, limited to 360,000 square feet. There's a sort of confusingly constructed condition about a grocery store, saying that, first of all, limiting the size of any individual building, but then also saying that if there is some certain, a certain amount of development of commercial buildings over 100,000 square feet, then a site plan has to include a grocery store in it. And then this number five is restricting the number of buildings that exclusively have restaurant uses to nine. So from an entitlement point of view, these don't really do very much. They just describe what can be on the site. But the real cap for retail is this number three here, which limits it to 360,000 square feet. And just to be clear, the grocery store condition referenced individual addresses, so I made this to make it a little bit more clear, I hope, that the bulk of the commercial, which would have to include the grocery store, is in the middle, and then the condition limiting restaurant buildings is on the westernmost lot. Before I do get into entitlement, this is the original Old Town PD. I'll zoom right into this site. So I feel like the conditions roughly mimic what was permitted before, so this would be on the, so here's the utility easement, which is kind of a little hard to see, running this way. So presumably, the restaurants would be on this lot, somewhere between the easement and the lot line.
And the road? Between the easement and what?
Excuse me, and the lot line, so it references this address and PIN number. So they would go somewhere in there, I presume. This was one of the commercial areas in the Old Town PD, the other one being the other case on the west side of the road, which you'll talk about next time. So the entitlement under the PD, and again, this is a bit of a mixture of what the PD allowed, and then also what the R10 allows, was about four units per acre, so an increase now to seven and a half or so. Pretty significant increase, almost doubling the residential entitlement. Again, office prohibited as a use in this case, and a, not insignificant, but not major increase in retail entitlement. So it is consistent with the future land use map, which is community mixed use, so does map to CX. No urban form. So I'll pause, the staff report does talk about the private open space, which I will say, you know, under normal circumstances, would look for more in terms of dedication of open space as a condition, to be consistent with that. But the future land use picture in Old Town overall really does closely mimic the PD. The PD predates the UDO and the comprehensive plan. And so this open space down here, which is private open space, housed the clubhouse for the golf course, which included a tennis court, and swimming pools, and a parking lot, and other things. So given the utility easement, and there's also some new river buffer that I have to deal with, it's not, the lack of conditions did not compel me for the intent of what I thought was that open space designation. However, if the applicant would like to condition some open space requirements for that part of the site, they're welcome to do that. So the consistent policies overall have a lot to do with mixed-use areas and mixed-use development. Zoning for housing is an increase in the entitlement for residential units. The inconsistent policies have mostly to do with buffering and density, so now, under approval of this request, you would have community mixed-use zoning next to R10. And the neighborhood transitions would apply, because they apply to vacant land. But that's a pretty stark contrast between moderate density and a CX zoning. And then park staff, the 2018 case included conditions to have a park facility, you might recall, and also greenway connection. And so park staff, in their view, identified that it would be beneficial, or could be beneficial, to have language about connectivity to those facilities, should they be eventually located in a way to connect to the site. So that's about those policies. But overall, still consistent with the comprehensive plan. The CAC did vote on the case, and recommended approval, 17 to 4. They then had a follow-up vote after that one. Someone made a motion with a list of conditions they would like to see below, so a grocery store, landscaping, sit-down restaurant, and they voted again. So I don't think I have any more to say, other than, take that as you will, I am reporting what happened. If it's confusing, I don't disagree, but both votes were recommending approval, so. And this vote also included the other case, so Z 22. So they voted on the whole shebang all at once, and they voted twice. So I'll leave it at that. So the only outstanding issue is the other case is pending, but it's not really, doesn't have to be pertinent on this case if you don't see it as such, and those are your times to discuss before your deadline is out. Can I have questions?
I do.
Yeah, any questions for staff?
On the inconsistencies, number one back there, pull those up again. Density transitions, that's because of CX and a border zone.
So all of this TC, oh, that's, sorry. Oh, right, so there's another zoning condition, or rezoning case, TC Z 4 coming up. But all that yellow area is now zoned R10. So the case you're hearing today is this one, which would be CX. So CX basically surrounded by R10. Typically, if that were, you know, absent of all the PD history, if that were to come before us today, we'd be looking for some stronger transitions between the CX uses and the residential uses.
And there's nothing in Z that?
There's no, there's nothing existing now, right. Yes. And to be fair to what we have before us, basically, this request is very close to what the entitlement in the original PD was, which envisioned, you know, a commercial center with residential to serve it. But.
Thank you.
That was before the comprehensive plan, I would say also.
So which part of this case is zoned R10 now?
So this corner here was in the Z 18 case, and is now also included. So I think I might have a, yeah. So this case is that gray outline that includes the PD on the east side of New Hope, and then also the sort of triangular shapes, R10, that goes right up to the intersection of Rock Quarry and New Hope.
All right, thank you.
Sorry, I think I am still a little confused. So is there, is there like a tree line, or some sort of setback on that? Or are we allowing development up to the street level? Is it?
There could, right, so the only limiting factor is the utility easement, which you can't have structures underneath, so it could be used for parking. So there is also a stream that might, I think, requires buffering, goes something like that. But absent those two things, there are no other constraints on development.
So is there any development there to the left, and to the right of the green line?
Uh, no, nothing today.
Okay. So what we're looking at is, where's the 450 multifamily units going?
So those can be anywhere on the site.
Okay, so then we're just looking at that smaller little section, then, of the larger, just that piece right there that you're talking about? Can you go back to the subdivided? Yeah.
This one?
Yeah.
Right.
So we're just voting on Z 2119?
Right, right. So this Z 2119 is this entirety, the yellow outline here. So the 2018 case is all around.
Okay.
That's where the R10 zoning is.
And so then that first sliver is going to be restaurant, then there's like a sliver in the middle that's going to be grocery, and then?
Well, so I will say, there's not a requirement for restaurants. There's a cap to the number, no more than nine standalone restaurants. There could be zero.
Right.
There is no minimum. And there's no restriction on any other, there could be any number on any of the other parcels. There is a zoning condition specifically for this lot that limits restaurants to nine.
Right.
So again, there could be any number on this lot, or this lot.
Okay.
And then there is a zoning condition in this center one, 2221, that says, if you're constructing more than 100,000 square feet of retail, there must be a site plan with a grocery store. But there's no requirement for, there's no minimum amount of retail or anything like that. So again, from an entitlement point of view, these don't really do anything in terms of guaranteeing anything, or prohibiting other parts of the site. They are just, you know, restraints from a site planning point of view.
They do guarantee you a grocery store if?
Sure, but there is, right, there is also, you know, 450 apartment units can be anywhere. So those could be in the middle, and all your retail could be here, for example. Obviously, they are expressing their intent of what they're trying to do via condition. But as we, as is our practice, we'll do the analysis of what the conditions actually do and don't require.
And why limit the unit sizes to two-bedroom?
That is a question for the applicant.
Any other questions for staff, before we move on to the applicant?
The local schools, they have capacity for?
I don't know specifically what, I'm assuming the Barrell Road Elementary would be. I do know this is, you know, planned in the land use map, and as they take our plans into account for their plans, but I don't have the particular answer for that.
Just a question, okay, cool, thank you.
And I just have a question about, when you're talking about limitations, what about like tree line for everybody else? Like for the residential area, how is it going to be carved out, or it can, as you said, go right up to residential? Or it can, as you said, go right up to residential?
So if there is a, I don't think I have... No, I don't. If there is a right-of-way in between, so... Presuming that there is like a road that goes like that and right-of-way separating the zoning district from the R-10, then there are no requirements. If they are directly abutting two property lines, then the CX would have to do the neighborhood transition zone. So that would be the Zone A, which is vegetated of some width, then 50 feet of no building, and then a height restriction on Zone C. But other than that, there's no additional condition about transition between the two.
So basically, we're getting the conditions for buffering from the UDO, not from this case?
Correct. Right. That's right.
Has the applicant done a market study?
I don't know.
Any further questions for staff before we call up the applicant?
So just, your staff report suggests that Table LU2, one of my favorites, says that height should be limited to four stories adjacent to an R-10 zoning district.
Right. So I think the general, right. So that table, which is in the land use section and has, is our guidance for height, has three categories. One is edge, which is within 100 or 150, I think, feet of moderate density. So not totally applicable site-wide for something that's large, but would suggest that zoning for community mixed use near that would be four stories and then the rest would be five with the general category. So overall, I think a consistent height. But again, I think that, that guidance is wrapped into the decision-making of these inconsistent policies about density transitions and buffers and so forth.
So are you saying that limitation would be applied at the site planning stage? Or are you saying not applying it?
When we were evaluating, when we evaluate consistency with the future land use map, that's when we usually look at the height request, so CX-5 in this case. And so there's a table that says five is generally okay, I think, for the site. But there is, the edge case exists also. For smaller sites, it's usually, we choose a category that best, that is best fit. In this case, because the site is so large, it does have general, the general category and also edge. So consistency with the future land use map would suggest that four stories nearer to R-10 zoning or moderate-density residential zoning land, that four stories would be more appropriate. Did that answer your question? I don't think it did.
I guess, so I'm asking, is this proposal saying that along the edge, four stories?
Oh, no, it is not. No. No, it is CX-5 with no height.
For the full site?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I guess I have a question for later.
All right. Let's move on to the applicant because I think we're starting to ask some questions that might be useful for the applicant to respond to. So the applicant has 10 minutes, along with anybody who hears, who is here to support your case.
Morning, members of the commission. My name is Charles Walker, 275 North P. Ridge Road in Pittsboro, 27312. As you know, I am the weak link amongst all of these cases. So I'll try and answer some of the specific questions that you had. One of the ones was the, the height restriction. We were relying on the UDO for their restriction. However, if the commission feels that they would feel more comfortable with an additional condition, what we would suggest is no more than, no more than four stories within, within 100 feet of a neighboring structure. And the reason why I'm saying that is because, and I'm gonna start drawing on this and I apologize, that is a future right-of-way road that has R-10 on the other side, on the exact side. In the original Old Town zoning case, that was a public road. And Mr. Eric Ruffkin from the Halle Group, who is literally our, our only neighbor, is here to speak. But in talks with them, their plans have not solidified enough to determine, you know, exactly where structures are going to be around us. So we're going to be following them. So if, again, if the commission feels like they need a condition, we could do, we don't have a problem with limiting from 150 feet to a neighboring structure. As far as how the...
Chuck, did you say 100 or...
I'm sorry, 150. I apologize. I apologize. As far as why we've done a couple of things, one of the, one of the questions you asked was why two-bedroom, the two-bedroom limitations is because we view this more as, as an urban product in, in this particular area, given that it has always been intended, as far as the, the Old Town zoning, it's always been intended to be the spoke of the wheel, the heartbeat of, of the project, whether or not it's being built by one entity or not. The other thing is that the Halle Group, in, as part of their project on the, surrounding us, is also doing an apartment complex, but they're doing more of a family-oriented system, which would go up to three bedrooms. So we figured that our bed, our apartments would be basically studio, one-bedroom and two-bedroom to catch the, the single or the, or the, or the, just the couple. And that was, that was our intent and that was, that was a negotiation we worked out with the Halle Group. As far as the restaurants, groceries, apartments designations, what we're doing is, what our intention is, is to use, is to try and create something that the neighbors have desperately wanted for is new restaurants in southeast Raleigh. So what we're, what we're wanting to do, and that's why we're kind of vague with some of the details, is we want that tract to be the restaurant village. So what we're thinking is having all of the restaurants in that area, have some shared parking under the, under the parallel easement, create kind of a restaurant courtyard, if you would. That it's not, that's not an inline, it's not an inline restaurant. It's not a McDonald's. It's not a Hardee's. It's, it's something that the neighborhood needs. And in the back is where, 2211 is where we anticipate the apartments to all be there. And in the middle, that's where the, that's where the grocery, the retail center itself, with a grocery door, store base would be. As we've gone through the process, the staff had asked us about the grocery store. As we all know, grocery stores are tough to figure out who's going to go where and they, and they take forever to make their decisions. So that's why we put the limitation that we would do, we could do up to 100,000 square feet of retail before the grocery store was, was committed to in place because we're not sure if they want to be up on the new road, if they want to be back, they want to be in the center. And that's kind of why we've worked, we've worked it that way. As Ira had said, in general, what we're trying to do here replicates the approvals from the original PD. And so we've got, the PD has been taken away, the UDO was inserted, and now we have new conditional use zoning. So we've tried to patch this together and honor as much of the original Old Town promise that we have been able to do. So I apologize if some of these seem awkward, but they have been thought out and there's a reason for them. So if any, if anyone has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Any questions for the applicant?
Yeah. Have you, I know the CAC vote was recently, but have you considered incorporating the requests from the second vote into your conditions?
We, we have. One of the ones was the, the dedicate, the agreement to the grocery store. And the other one was the agreement for the restaurants. So we have done that and then we're also, they were also asking for some restrictions of the square footage, which, which we did take into account. The only one that we couldn't do, and I had said it at the meeting, I explained it at the meetings, when they asked for a higher level of landscaping, we couldn't figure out how to define that. So I just told them, you know, that we would use the, as the basis would be the Raleigh Landscape Ordinance and, and we would go from there. So we have incorporated what, from both of those votes. There were actually, votes were taken within six minutes of each other. It was kind of, I agree with Ira, it was kind of strange.
Like I said, I was noticing, you know, they also mentioned the idea of office and a bank potentially. I don't know if there's really space for all of that.
That'll be Z-22.
Oh, I see.
Z-22 coming down the Pike will be restricted to retail and office. So that's, and again, like Ira said, when we went to the CAC, they were considering all of Z-21 and Z-22, so it all came together. But Z-21's leading the way here.
I guess I just also have a comment. On page 15 of the staff report, they note that this is a, this area has a low transit score and a low walk score. And with the density of apartments they're going in, it seems especially important to have amenities in the area. And I realize we can't, I mean, that's what you're trying to do and...
Well, if you could see both cases together, we're really trying to do that across the street on the western side of Z-22, and you see that in two weeks. We think it would be nothing better than someone that lives, that works in the office complex in Z-22 to be able to walk the quarter mile to their apartment and the grocery store is in the middle. So we are very cognizant of that, absolutely. And one more thing that we're asking about, open spaces and greenway transitions. Right about there is an existing pedestrian tunnel that is under the road, the future road of Old Town.
Where, that didn't, where did you say?
I just...
You just drew it.
Right there.
Oh, there.
There is a, there is an existing pedestrian's tunnel that goes under the road. So what we're doing is we will make, we'll make a connection using that existing tunnel to the land across the street, which is where the Halle Group had promised as part of their zoning to look into providing new park space. So we are adjacent, we are, we want to use, and we're going, we intend to use the existing structures.
Would you be willing to make that a condition of the case?
We, we could. We didn't feel we needed to because the, the tunnel is built and it's on our property. So we didn't feel the need to do that, but we could.
I guess we could use a little advice from staff about that. Does it make sense to have a condition that says something about the tunnel and more connectivity? Will that satisfy the park request for a condition to help with connectivity to park facilities?
Potentially. I'd have to check, because I know the, the 2018 case had an exhibit that said where the greener was going to be. I'm not fully sure of where, if there was a corresponding of where the park was going to be. And I did not know there was a tunnel. But I mean, we could certainly entertain a condition to preserve existing underground pedestrian connectivity, which might help. I think I would like some advice from parks planning on that one.
So I think we'll at least want to hold this case for, for that kind of condition.
I was gonna add a little bit of context, Thea, and I pulled up where you can, tunnel is right there. So there isn't anything in our site plan standards that would require them to build that. So let's say they get in there and start working on it and turns out it's crumbling. It may not be cost-effective for them to replace it. Putting a condition might require them to do so and would kind of memorialize the condition that's already there.
Okay.
Definitely see how they wouldn't want to, they would want to use that if it's there, but...
But if it's not, the construction is not in good shape?
Right. To some extent, we would trust they would do what would be rational without a condition and a condition might enforce their, force their hands, given something unforeseen.
A condition could also say if the tunnel is not, can't be used or can't be salvaged, then, you know, something could replace it above ground or...
Could offer any number of different things, yeah.
I mean, I hope that the tunnel is useful, but, because that would be nicer for pedestrians. But if it's, if it becomes unsafe, we want to make sure that there's something to either replace it or to, above ground or below ground is what I would suggest.
Well, as with everything else with the, with the condition use cases in the subdivisions, there are greenways and sidewalks all over the place. So what we, since we are far enough, we are so far away from Walnut Creek Greenway, the only thing we can do is have sidewalks and greenways that attach to the sidewalks and greenways that attach to Walnut Creek. So we'll have, we'll be required to put sidewalks everywhere. So by default, we would be attaching to the future greenway as it, as it's built.
Perhaps a consult with the parks staff to find out what it is they're asking for that's over and above that, that might want to be conditioned in. And also to, you know, if this tunnel is part of that, that it is either maintained or it's replaced with something equivalent. Does that sound reasonable? Okay, thanks.
I was looking for a slide I thought I had, which I do not. Different slide deck.
I'm, I'm sorry, I have a quick question.
Sure.
The question about like landscaping, you said that you were going to follow...
Yeah. Shelley, could you use your microphone and speak up a bit, please?
Is this better? I'm sorry. We're going back, you were saying about landscaping. The question was for a higher quality than the minimum standard, but you said that you were going to use the standard that we already have? So is that, are you saying you're going to use the minimum standard?
When that condition was brought up at the public hearing, we had asked how, how to try and define that as a, as a, as a condition. And it was decided we couldn't do, we couldn't figure out, we couldn't just say, you know, all the landscape is going to be 15% bigger or something like that. And so we just, we, at the meeting said, before the vote was taken, that we would use Raleigh's landscape ordinance as it stands to do it. Now, obviously, if there are other places where, that we can accentuate it, we will. But as far as exceeding the landscape ordinance, we have not, we have not considered that. Because at the time, I think the neighbors were just saying, we want to make sure that it's going to look nice. I mean, that's exactly what they said.
Right. Because I'm thinking, whereas, I can only imagine in terms of higher quality when we're looking at other areas, when we're developing, that, that, that minimum standard is not necessarily applied in various areas. So trying to find equity in this area as well. So if it's not something you can define clearly, but maybe it's something that you can see in other areas and then replicate.
Okay. Well, again, and this was basically the discussion we had at the time. Are you asking for larger shade trees, bigger buffers, larger shrubs? And, and the neighbors really didn't...
And they couldn't define exactly what it was.
They couldn't come into an agreement. So that's kind of where we, why we dropped that one, that one suggestion.
In an effort to check off another box on the consistency side,
Yes.
the transition from the CX to the R-10.
Yes, sir.
Conditioning for the four stories within 150 feet would make me feel a lot better.
And we are offering that. We're just asking that we allow it to be 150 feet from the nearest structure.
Yep, that's fine.
And if that's the case, then we will add that condition, absolutely.
I'm good with that. The other is, I don't want to get into site planning or anything. I don't know whether there is a way to memorialize the restaurant configuration as opposed to being, you know, nine restaurants, up to nine restaurants along the road. But I appreciate you at least...
I can tell you as far as our concept goes, and of course, we have to deal with, with restaurants. Our concept here is restaurants there, restaurants there, shared parking there. That's our concept.
It sounds, I mean, I'm, I'm fine with it. I guess what I was saying is, I just wanted to make sure that was that. But I'm gonna roll with, with where you are on that. Just, I think it makes a lot of sense and that would, I think...
And one of the things that was in the report, they had mentioned that this stub street here as the, as the entrance to the subdivision, and that's not the case. That's a stub street that was built decades ago for one, one reason we don't know. But the, the base of the future entrance of the parking, of the project is there and it's built. It's just covered with material and stuff.
Just going back to the CAC request, their request for a sit-down restaurant, is there a way in conditions to talk about the level of quality of restaurants going in? Because it seems like they were probably pointing to having something other than fast food.
I would be open to try and figure that out. I mean, unfortunately, with the way things are done these days, even a Chili's has a drive-through these days. So if, you know, if there's something, if it's, that it's predominantly a sit-down restaurant or something like that, we'd be open to do that. But we couldn't, we couldn't figure out a way to craft that. We are not, and all I can say, is it not drive-through indominate, however you want to do that. We're looking for, we're looking for sit-down restaurants and that's why we're asking for the shared parking because, you know, we want a larger rest, we want larger restaurants with a larger footprint, but then they come into conflict with the parking lot. So that's why we're offering the shares, the shared parking.
So I just want to follow, I believe staff has, can answer this question, but I believe we can condition out drive-through restaurants.
It would need to be by uses at, so, and I'm not sure. I would defer to staff on if there's a used category that would distinguish between different types of restaurants in the way that you're looking to craft that condition.
The other is, I don't, I wouldn't be comfortable restricting no drive-throughs because the neighborhood may actually want some, you know. I want to run out and get something to eat. You know, not necessarily all, but I wouldn't want to see all nine with drive-through. You know, and I don't know how really to...
And that's kind of where we are, it's the same thing. When we started, when people started, you know, tipping off restaurants they wanted, they would like to have seen, almost all of them had a restaurant component. You know, we'd love to see Chick-fil-A. You know, we'd love to see Chick-fil-A there, has a drive-through. We'd love to see Chili, has a drive-through.
Okay, could we limit it to like one or two or something like that, since we have a count of nine?
I, I feel like the drive-through restaurant would take away greatly from the pedestrian quality. And so it might be useful to try to protect that as part of what's written in the case.
Again, what we were trying to do was to encourage restaurants to come, but not limit the ones that have a drive-through component. And again, that's where we, we're getting into the, you know, obvi- obviously Sullivan's doesn't have a drive-through, but, um, we're just, we're just trying to be able to cast the wide enough net to pull in what this, what this whole region truly needs.
So along New Hope Road there in that corner. What's the frontage on that road? And maybe that's a place where enhanced landscaping could be used to soften the impact of drive-through restaurants?
Well, if, 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 if this would be an offer, we could possibly do this, if this would be an offer, there's, the existing trees are limited to there. Part of it is in a repairium buffer, part of it is in there. What we could do is along that, that stretch of the, of the lot, we could offer a fifty, fifty foot, fifty foot wide protective buffer from the existing right-of-way. That is something that we could, that is something we could defend today and is definitive. So we'll be, we could do that.
That's already gonna be required by code.
That is required? And the trees there would be conserved?
Yes, again. We're relying a lot on the existing code, not trying to put everything in, in the, in the, in the zoning case.
I guess going back to Ms. Winter's comment about equity in how this development's gonna be landscaped in contrast to, say, a more established upscale part of town. I wonder if there's a similar development, you know, that exists in town that you could compare to, to get an idea of comparable landscaping to comply with the CAC request for something a little nicer than the minimum, and I don't.
The, the easiest thing for us through all to define, we could do, we could, would be probably the street trees. I mean, we could, we could set a minimum size of the street trees because we know where they are and, and all that kind of stuff. I'm not sure if that addresses your concern or not. I've, I've, I've done work in, in this, you know, I've done work in this area forever. So I know what a higher level means, but when I, we were asking to try and pull that information out of the crowd, it got, got kind of crickets, crickets in silence, and so that's when we moved on.
Right. Trees will, I think, would be a great, I think it's more so in terms of green space and how it looks aesthetically as opposed to just asphalt and shingles.
Okay.
And, you know, a quality product, again, that you see in other areas of town.
Okay.
Giving the equity to this area that typically has not seen that.
Okay.
You might be able to consider, um, both size of planting when it goes in, which I know that's a difficulty, that there's a cost associated with that. Or perhaps, uh, level of evergreens or species and also frequency of plantings or something like that, that sometimes the, the base code just, it, it can be a little, you know, spotty. Maybe, and so.
I'm offended by that. I helped write that ordinance, but anyway.
Well, I mean, I think it's good and important, but, you know, there may be just a little bit more substance you can put in there just to help it look, um, a little more filled in earlier on in the process, something. I'm not a landscape architect, so that's all.
I'm always trying to make this definitive so everyone understands what we're saying. If we, let's say, the minimum shade tree in the landscape ordinance is two and a half inches, if I remember correctly, if we would make the minimum shade tree anywhere in the project three and a half inches, that sounds enhanced and it's global. It's not just on the shade, it's in the parking lots and all that kind of stuff. Is that, if that's, I'd be willing to add that as a, as a definable condition.
That, that might be good. I think, I'm, I'm gonna take a guess that perhaps also there's concern about the, kind of the edges, the buffers, providing planting material that, you know, would, um, do, do its job and, and do it well. So I don't know if there's some language that can strengthen those areas or not.
I don't know if we can provide that because we are, while we are the center of the project, we are surrounded by, uh, by, uh, land that has not been defined as what its site plan may be. So as we were talking about here, part of that could be a right-of-way as an example. So it's not, it'll have a different, you know, the, the city would like us to more like address the street if it's a street. But if it's, if it's, you know, the backyards or townhomes, then all of us, they're, um, hearken back to the landscape ordinance. Again, it requires a buffer once those two differing uses have been established. So that's, again, that's one of the reasons why we're relying on the landscape ordinance because by that time, it will be applied to a pair of site plans, both us and our neighbor. So that's, that's kind of why we're relying that way.
So are you saying if you develop yours first, it might be that that buffering would really occur on the, the second development?
We will be, we will not be the first to develop because most of the commercial developments like to see rooftops. And even though there's a lot around, they're gonna be waiting to see what happens within the project. So, but what I'm just saying is, once that's defined by our neighbor as what their site plan's gonna be, then we can, then we can apply buffering and planting that is appropriate to what's beside us. If that is a road, then it's, that's, it's street trees and, and parking lots greens. If it's the backyard, then there's, then there's obviously buffering that has to be done that we would have to take in, take into account because we would be the higher use. So again, that's why we were relying on the ordinance to, to be more appropriate.
Would it, um, would it be, um, unduly difficult on you to write the two scenarios as part of your conditions? Should, you know, so that you're, you have a slightly improved planting plan?
We would not be able to react to what's around us because in R ten, those things could be single-family houses. They could be, they could be townhomes, they could be condos, they could be, I mean, there could be another apartment complex there. So we don't, we just simply don't know what's there. So that's the only thing we can address. I'd rather get it right when the site plans hit than try and, you know, cherry pick something out of the future. So that's why we were, that's why I had said larger trees material globally would, would be an enhancement that I know that we could define regardless of what's around us.
Well, I, I do support the additional width on, in a condition.
So there's the two new conditions, the, the transition and the larger trees. We don't have a problem in word with either one of those.
That sounds good, and to follow up, I'm also wondering, in addition to transitions with the adjacent development, I'm wondering if, and this may be covered in the UDO, UDO, and I apologize, I'm not completely familiar. Will there be transitions between the apartment development and, for example, the grocery and the restaurants? Since those are different uses?
We would anticipate there would not be buffers between them because we want that to be kind of a city center. North Hills is, is a perfect example. It has differing uses with no buffer around it. The original plan for Old Town did not have buffers within differing uses because so it was a single project, not grocery store here, green belt, houses. It was a single entity.
It's an urban look.
Absolutely, and that's what we, and again, that was one of the times when we were trying to mirror the, the existing PD regulations.
And I guess the reason I'm asking is on page fourteen of the staff report, under policy LU seven point five, high-impact commercial uses, there's a note about, um, the high-impact uses of restaurants, drive-throughs, and bars and that type of thing and their proximity to housing. I didn't know if, it, it looked to me like that was being pointed out as something that might need to be mitigated, maybe I'm misinterpreting, I don't know if.
Couple of points. For, first, for the, the, in terms of buffering, the neighborhood transition in the UDO applies between zoning districts. So there would not be, if there's, within the CX, presuming it's approved, different uses, that would not be required. However, it does apply to R ten land that is vacant. So should the site develop first and there is no road constructed here, they would have to buffer to nothing effectively. Unless they build the road on their own site and know that there's a road there. Should the site to the south develop first, then they would know whether there is a right-of-way or, or other private property or not and would have to buffer accordingly. So Chuck is correct in terms of like which comes first. I do feel like the neighborhood transition anyway, as it stands, would be applied appropriately. To answer your other question, um, yes, I think that, so that policy, I don't think it would be inconsistent to have those types of uses on this site. Again, it is quite large. I think that policy would point to where they might not be located in terms of closeness to residential use, which to go back to our earlier conversation about drive-through restaurant versus not. Again, I don't think that the policy analysis was not meant to say there shouldn't be a drive-through here. It was more to say in that there could be, you know, single-family houses or townhouses or any number of things in the R ten, perhaps some distance from that, those higher-impact uses are not appropriate. So sort of all related, I think, together. Don't like to really make suggestions like that at the podium, but, um, I do feel like the applicant would not be opposed to maybe restricting certain types of uses in proximity to where the R ten is without prohibiting them outright or requiring some number of them or fifty percent or whatever the other scenario would be. That might get at what we're trying to get at here. Perhaps.
Is the, um, is the grocery store planned on being a twenty-four hour grocery store?
No.
And then, um, so I think that the restaurants being furthest away, I think, kind of helps in that. No, but parking, would parking for the grocery store be somewhat shared? I assumed it would be, like if there's overflow from the restaurant.
It'd be part of a, it'd be part of a larger shopping center. It won't be a, something that's, that's off onto itself and it'll be integrated into the overall retail uses. Uh, one other thing I do wanna mention is the repairium buffer for, uh, for that creek. It runs about like that. And again, Eric can speak to it, but the current plan, uh, on their plan is that area is, or excuse me, that area was one, one of their stormwater devices for the project is. So we're not gonna have, in that restaurant area, we're not going to have, uh, you know, residential uses right up against it. So, but he could speak to that more than I could because he's talking about, we were talking about his property. But the plans that I have seen so far, the repairium buffer is clearly established in that area, and that's the low point of the area, which is where the, one of their major stormwater devices are going to be. The current design.
And, and I'm sorry, I think that there's, there's two, we split it up. I think the prior voting committee had them combined, right? But there's another, is that, is that what we're also looking, not today, but we're looking at the other zoning requests?
We're not looking at the other zoning request today.
But another day.
Another day, yeah.
Yeah, so there's, um, there's actually three that you'll see eventually relatively soon. This one and Mr. Walker's other, which is the Z twenty-two on the other side of New Hope, the commercial part. There is a third one, so the, the twenty-eighteen case that rezoned the bulk of the PD area to, um, R ten, included a condition that restricted, um, the residential units to persons age fifty-five and older. And so that has, is gonna be a text change rezoning to change that condition in some way. I'm, I'm not sure the particular, whether it's to remove it entirely or, or limit it in some other way. So that's working through the, the TCZ process and will be upcoming. But my understanding is that's the scope of that change, which is the age restriction part of it. But so the, the, all of Old Town will be sometime this year, I think. Yeah, right. In some way in front of this board, yeah.
So, um, I'm gonna suggest that, uh, it sounds to me like we've already discussed four conditions that potentially could be added. And so I'm sure that we're gonna be tabling this for two weeks while you guys work on that condition.
Wish you wouldn't, but we.
Well, we must, we need the conditions before we rule, rule on this case.
Okay.
But we haven't finished hearing from any, from the applicant and from those in support or opposition. But the conditions I've heard so far are tree widths, um, some can, can, condition about the number of restaurants that can have drive-throughs, I don't know who's. Sure. Okay. Uh, the condition about four stories for structures within a hundred and fifty feet of residential or something to that effect, and about the tunnel and connectivity to, to park. So is there any more that you would like to tear, tell us about for your presentation today?
Uh, no, if you have any other questions, I'll be glad to answer them. I appreciate the time you've given this project, thank you. I know this is a quagmire and I appreciate what we're trying to do here.
All right, and so is there anybody here to speak in support?
I think we have one more question.
Okay, one more question.
I have the question about, are you allotting, what, what is the price point for these apartments? Are you looking at affordable housing or is it going to be market rate?
They are going to be, they're gonna be little A affordable housing, not big A affordable housing. In the fact that they're going to be relatively small, so by default, they're going to be, uh, lower rent. The studio apartment would be, you know, just a few hundred square feet. So even give, applying market rates by its just, by its architecture, it would be a lower rate. Again, what we're doing is trying to provide a, a type of housing that's not available in that area right now, given what's going to, what we think is gonna happen with Old Town, surely what's gonna, what's happening right now with Amazon. That's kind of, we have specifically gone for a more urban, more affordable type of apartment.
Do you have a unit mix?
Do not have the unit mix now.
Did you do a market study at all?
We've done some market studies, uh, uh, Cushman has done a market study and we were, uh, given the plan that we're trying to, that we're trying to create, they, they think we can be very successful. So again, there's not, there's just not anything in this area that, that'll, that is anywhere near what we're trying to, trying to do. Most all the other apartment complexes in the area, if they exist, are kind of suburban-style apartments.
Mr. Gary, did you have one more question or comment?
I'm trying to follow the bouncing ball of the park dedication in the, um, the original PD, and then it came in through the rezoning last year. And am I reading this right, that as part of that rezoning, nine acres of this site would have been dedicated as, as city park, or am I not reading that right?
Of this zoning case? No.
It'd be in the, in the yellow here. So it theoretically could have existed on this corner because that's part of the rezoning. But if that's removed from the conditions, the park condition would remain and would then have to be somewhere in the, in the R ten zoning. It was not specified as a location, I don't believe.
It was not, okay.
I, I do know that the, there was an exhibit for where the greenway was planned to go to connect with the overall greenway plan. So the Walnut Creek Greenway exists and is nearby. And so that was worked out with parks last year. I don't recall if there was a, a location on that exhibit for where the park itself would be or not on the site. I'd have to look that up.
Kind of think there was, but I won't.
There, there may have been, I don't recall precisely, I can, I can check though.
Well, all right, we can find that out. Anyway, we were gonna have a nice park there and somewhere in this five hundred and whatever it is acres.
Well, Mr. Rifkin is here, he can tell you, but it's my recollection that they had some, some language to a park space.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So anyone here to speak in support?
Good morning, members of the planning commission. My name is Eric Rifkin, I'm assistant vice president of the Halli Companies at Fifty-Six Hundred Street in Apex. Uh, I appreciate all the comments that I've heard today so far, that everyone's very interested in this case. It's a major investment for Chuck's group and our group, and we're excited to bring some new life to Old Town. We're a developer based out of Maryland. We've done a lot of large mixed-use communities. Kingstown would be a good example, one just south of, uh, four ninety-five. And, um, Odenton, Maryland is another good example of a large-scale one we've done. Here locally, we developed the villages of Apex, which is a two-hundred-and-two-acre community that's mixed-use. In addition, we have, uh, three-hundred-and-forty-five acres off Ellis Road in Durham that is a mixed-use community we're doing. So Old Town fits very well within that range and scope of what we do. We're here in support of Chuck's request. We've worked with them thoroughly over the past probably ten months since we purchased the property at the end of last year. Firstly, to gain an understanding of what Old Town was, what the vision was, what it will be, and then finding ways to work together. Some of the things I think have come up that I just wanted to speak about very quickly and not steal Chuck's show. Firstly, when the commercial folks look at what a four-story building. Firstly, when the commercial folks look at what a four-story building versus a five-story building costs, it goes from a type 5A construction to a 3A construction, I think they're very quickly going to look at that and say that that's not something they want to do. Secondly, the two-bedroom apartment limitation works out very well with what we're planning to do, which is garden-style apartments, townhomes, duplexes, single-family homes, a mix of different uses that typically don't get as small as studio, one-bed and two-bed. Thirdly, the tunnel, it's been referenced that we have a zoning case that will be a text change, and that will be before you hopefully sometime in the next two months. When that comes forward, you'll see a lot of changes to the Greenway, which we spoke about with Parks and Rec extensively. I think that there will be great opportunities for the commercial to connect to that, and I don't believe the tunnel is viable, because there were wetlands calls done on the site, which showed that the north side actually became a buffered area. And then lastly, just wanted to reiterate that, yes, Chuck was correct in pointing out that this area right here in red will be a stormwater pond, which will be accepting runoff from the commercial. And I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
I didn't understand the third point you made about the tunnel being unusable, because why?
We had the Corps and the state go out and look at the wetlands calls and the stream buffer calls, and at that time, because there was a, can you get something a little bit more zoomed in on the commercial track? That'd be great. So the tunnel is approximately, someone's going to correct me, there. And if you can see this wide berth of trees, that's all wetlands, and there's actually a stream running through that like this. And so that's all buffered. And so at this point, we wouldn't be able to touch that. So I hate to be the bearer of bad news about the tunnel issue, but I did want to bring that to the forefront before that conversation went further.
Are you the man who knows where the park is?
So on the previous, oh goodness, sorry. On the previous conditions for the zoning, there was no place shown for the park specifically. What was shown specifically on Exhibit B was the Greenway pathway, which that Greenway pathway ran something like that.
So do you know where the park will go?
Not yet. We haven't determined that yet.
Will that be part of your TCZ?
Yeah, that's a condition, that condition will not be changing in the TCZ, that, that park will still be there.
All right.
So that Greenway was, was roughly accurate. I would say that the language that exists now says 25-acre park identified by the property owner to be located near the intersection of New Hope Road and Walnut Creek, so somewhere up in that corner would be the park. So it's not specifically, there is the exhibit, which clearly does show where the Greenway's going to go. That's all that's described of where the park would be. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here to speak in support? Anyone here to speak in opposition? The none, let's bring it back to the table. So we obviously are asking for more conditions. And is there anything else that we want to talk about or ask the applicant about before we table it for two weeks and allow him to come back with additional conditions after discussion with staff? So there's no opposition to tabling this for two weeks? I know you don't like it, but.
I guess that's what I'm down to. When I said over there, I would be against it, but since I'm sitting here, I will, will accept it.
Thank you. All right, so we're tabling it for two weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to old business. We have CP for Falls of Neuse.
A lot of slides about South Saunders Street to scan through. All right, so this was a comprehensive plan amendment that was first before you, two weeks ago, deferred for some little, some more information about the existing zoning. So the request is to extend the Parkway corridor designation in the Falls of Neuse area, so the dark green in this, in this map image on the right is what's existing today, and so the lime green here and here, which now with a green pointer is less than contrast. So this would be, is the, what's proposed under the new request. So just as a recap, that's what I just said. So the, the main implication of this would be, should any property request a rezoning in the future that has this designation, they would, we would be looking for the inclusion of a Parkway corridor to be consistent with the urban form map. So the main features of the Parkway corridor are the 50-foot setback from the right-of-way of building and parking, and then that, that 50 feet requires some landscaping requirements. So that's the, that's the downstream implication of this. The question was, how would that affect existing, the built development? That was the question last time. So outlined in, in the staff report, but so this is Raven Ridge Road, the area where the Parkway corridor will be applied. So that Area A up there, there's really only one lot that fronts on Raven Ridge, which is this one here, currently a single detached house on it. And again, they would be, they would want to rezone from R4 to some RX, because remember that frontages can only be applied to mixed-use districts, so they would need, would be looking for RX or higher for this to affect them. The main question, though, came in this, in this area B that I labeled, which was the commercial area. So there was a member of the public last time who represented Bojangles on the corner there that I highlighted, just concerned about what this might mean for them. This whole stretch of Raven Ridge is in the Falls River PD, which is from 1994, I want to say. Yes. So the built development, which we'll cover first, currently does not, would not comply with Parkway corridor. I want to say I made this measuring in iMaps, which is not precise, and then drawn in PowerPoint, which is also not precise, so this is a very rough estimate. But I think it's pretty clear that there is parking and buildings within 50 feet of the right-of-way on this stretch. So presumably, should any of these properties wish to rezone and apply the Parkway corridor, they would be non-conforming with that, including the Bojangles. The, so the question then is, what were they, what, what do they have existing now, and what would they, in order to rezone to something, they have to rezone from something. So the, this is the Falls River master plan, and then the Area A and B are what I just showed on Raven Ridge. North is not straight up and down here. It's that way, so a bit skewed. Quite a large PD as they go. This particular area is in a part of the PD, which was yellow on this map, called the mixed-use area. So that included commercial office residential, that the use is SC, was the shopping center district in the old code, and O and I-1 is one of the office and institutional. So allows quite a lot of stuff, retail, commercial. This did allow 15 dwelling units an acre also, so mixed-use area. The other standards, dimensional standards of this particular mixed-use part of the PD are, I would say, extremely permissive. So it says there shall be no set, minimum setbacks or build-twos, no transitional yards, and then basically no parking. All to be, all those things would be determined on a case-by-case basis, given the context, which I would hazard to say we would not approve language like this today. And I do know, speaking from my, speaking with my friends in development services, that this, when come, things, things in this PD come in today can be problematic sometimes about what this, what this guidance really is. But all that is to say, they would want to have, give up this zoning to request some other mixed-use zoning for this Parkway corridor to be applied. So the other area, just to be complete, is on the northern part, so from, on Falls of Neuse all the way up to Capitol. And again, two areas, this D section already has Parkway corridor, Parkway frontage, excuse me, applied, and is conforming, so that effectively would not change any of the zoning or built form of that area. So it would really just be C, which is between Spruce Tree Way and north of Wakefield Pines Drive. And so none of that appears to be conforming with the Parkway. So presumably redevelopment would change these building footprints and parking footprints and buffers. So those are the, this would have an impact on those two, the B and the C, as I labeled them in the staff report. But again, this would be upon rezoning and upon redevelopment, and there already is commercial zoning on all these places, so. And that's all I have. That's new.
Practical effect, I guess, would that when they'd be, when they would come in for a rezoning, they would be deemed inconsistent with the future land use map? So whatever happens with that, you know, you've seen cases come through that are inconsistent and consistent, so I think practically that's how, what it would be for you guys.
So today, if we wanted to move this forward and try to perhaps moderate it somewhat for the area down in the PD, could we say, let's go forward with this, but eliminate Section B from the Parkway?
You can, you can make a recommendation. So the way that the UDO describes the process for a comp plan amendment is that you can make a recommendation for an amendment to City Council. So if you want to remove any section, that would become part of your certified recommendation. Yeah.
Would C fall into that as well?
It would, but I, we haven't had any representation from that area. It, it also is not next to Capitol, it's kind of in the middle of things, and those things, those buildings there look to me like something that'll, the likelihood of redevelopment in our lifetime is probably not high. But anyway, the only one that gives me heartburn is, is B. And so I would be willing to move this case forward as is with, by removing B, but that's my personal opinion. So, you know, any more questions for staff at this point?
Let me see if I understand this. The City Council authorized a text change to do?
No, not quite. So City Council requested staff to initiate this comprehensive plan amendment, yeah.
Not a text change, a comprehensive plan amendment.
Right, right, but they.
And they specified where it should go?
Yes.
So you're suggesting that we recommend approval with the remove, well.
No, I'm recommending that, and so, you know, City Council can always put back what, what we, I mean, so, I mean, and it's just a recommendation, it's, we could send it forward and say, we could vote to recommend that that's removed, we can send it forward as is. I mean, it's going to be up to us as to what we do, but for me, you know, I'm asking staff if it's possible to say, you know, how do we say that?
It's entirely possible, yes.
Okay, should not be included.
Yeah, is it, so I'm looking, is it A, B, C, D, or does that cover all four?
Those are the, that's, all of the road that would have this designation applied via this amendment, yes.
Right, so you, you could just say recommend without B.
Right.
Or any other, I mean, you're welcome to say the Parkway should, corridor should extend to any individual parcel with a PIN, you know, any?
Or we could hold it at the table and talk about it more, or we could send it to the committee of the whole. But I don't, you know, I don't have a strong feeling that this needs a whole lot more discussion. I mean, I think we can either recommend that it exclude something, or just send it on as is, but that's my thought about it right now. I mean, I don't, I don't see a reason to, there's not a whole lot to discuss, in my opinion, but.
Why not exclude C? Falls into the same.
Yeah. It falls into the same, but to me, that looks like an area that's probably not going to be redeveloped anytime soon. This area looks a little bit more transitional to me, especially as you get closer to the Durant Road. But, I mean, you could also exclude, recommend excluding C. I, I just would like to find a way to move this on one way or another without seeing it again and again.
No, I'm, I'm with you there. The reason I say include C is that if, if something were to redevelop there, we, they would be in the same situation as this, so I would be, I'm fine excluding both of those.
I would exclude both too. I don't have a strong opinion about it, but B seems to be the one that has the most.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
No question about it, but I think that that would get to the original intent, that people, they're just looking to keep things the way they are, and when things are redeveloped, that they're, we, we know what's going to happen there. I think is where they were coming from, so.
You said C is a house?
No, C is.
In letter A there.
He hasn't gotten to C yet here.
He was in the Falls of Neuse, on Falls of Neuse, on the northern section, which is some combination of commercial uses.
So I guess there's one track down at the very bottom on the southern side.
It's not developed yet.
It's not developed yet, and they would be able to build to similar to what's there already. So that would, that would be a change from what they have now, but the whole rest of that corridor, and up at the very top on the southern, I mean, northern side, there is an area there, but what is that zone? Is that residential up there?
Where the trees are.
Yeah.
On this part?
Yeah.
I think it is residential, yes, part of that subdivision. It may or may not be tree conservation area or something else related, I don't recall precisely, but.
So what's your pleasure?
So I'm going to move that we recommend approval of this comprehensive plan amendment with, and also recommend that City Council remove Section B as designated on your map.
But not C?
Not C.
Could I get a, could I get a yay on C if we cut, what was that road on that, if we changed C to, to end at Wakefield Pines? The section between?
Spruce Tree Way? So you're talking about then?
A, bit section between Spruce Tree Way and Wakefield Pines would be excluded?
So like, so then presumably you would have a, a gap where there would be no Parkway?
Well, that would, that would, you could include that under the Parkway, even though I do know that there.
Oh, would be excluded, right. So you'd have, then you'd have Parkway extension, just to be clear, there and to the south.
And then there are those two tracks that run into the problem that we were discussing. If they were to be redeveloped, they would fall under the Parkway frontage, but.
Not sure why that's a problem, and as Catherine said, if we want to approve it and find that it's not consistent with the future land use map, we can do that.
Yeah, it wouldn't be a.
Somebody can do it.
All right, so we have a motion, but we don't have a second. So. The motion was just for, to approve with a recommendation that B be removed. So we have to finish this. And so if nobody's going to second, the motion dies, so I'll.
I apologize, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm not really understanding why we're taking out Section B. Could you simply describe, I mean, it seems pretty straightforward, but I don't, maybe I'm not following it closely enough.
It's, because it's already zoned as a PD, it's already built out in a completely different way. It's never going to be a Parkway-looking thing, not in our lifetimes anyway.
That makes sense.
You're probably right. I would say.
The PD thing for me.
People probably said that about Old Town. And, and here we are, but you know.
Touche.
All right, so if we don't have a second, we're, all right. So now we're going to have further discussion, and if there's none, then we need to vote on. All right, so now we're going to have further discussion, and if there's none, then we need to vote on this particular recommendation. All right.
From my perspective, I would be more inclined not to move forward with, not to send this forward with only B being taken out. I would vote for, I would prefer to see B and C taken out. And the C.
Being modified.
Being slightly modified to end at Wake, what was that, Wake?
Right.
Wakefield Drive or whatever.
So what will happen is we finish this vote, and if it fails, then you can make that, that, your motion. So, but for now, we're going to vote on this. So all in favor of this motion, say aye. Aye. All opposed?
Nay.
So is that just two noes, raise your hand for the noes? Okay, so the motion carries, so we're moving it forward with a recommendation that it goes forward, but with the B section removed for the PD. Thank you. All right, we're moving on to the unsafe building code.
So we received several questions at the last commission meeting, and we are here hopefully to answer some of those questions. We have, since we are now the last thing of the day, or close to it, I'll move through some of the slides that may give background rather than direct answers to your questions. I will tell you that there was a question about where the change fit into the process. And as you remember, this text change that is before you inserts one new concept, and that is to allow the city council to designate a community development target area. And, and that, that allows then an inspector to use a slightly different standard in declaring a house, or, excuse me, a non-residential structure as unsafe. And that, that change is the only new provision that is added to the, to the code. The process that is set by state statute requires that an inspector issue a declaration. If the property owner repairs or corrects the unsafe condition, the process stops. The new tool that is being brought forward fits here at the inspector declaration step. And in looking at the difference between the new and old, under state law, applicable to all buildings, a building can be declared unsafe by an inspector if it is dangerous to life due to these items. It's basically the things that threaten the community by continuing the building in that condition. The change coming forward adds, in the community development target area, an area suffering from poverty or blight, that a vacant or abandoned non-residential building that the inspector determines causes or contributes to blight, disease, vagrancy, fire or safety hazards, poses a danger to children, and attracts people intent on crime. If the inspector has evidence and can establish that those conditions exist, then that inspector can make a declaration that is included in step one of the process. If the property owner corrects the conditions, then nothing further happens. If the property owner does not, then under state law, a hearing is set. That hearing is preceded by a notice that provides written information to the property owner about what's wrong. The hearing is a formal opportunity for the property to come over, come in, and present evidence that contradicts what the inspector provides. That formal notice and hearing provides the due process protection that you asked about, along with the statutory protections, the statutorily required steps. The inspector, after the hearing, must issue a post-hearing order, and that is subject to appeal to the city council. And under state law, it is also subject to a challenge in superior court. May be removed to the courts on a certiorari petition. All of that happens, all of those procedural rights and protections occur before the enforcement. That court order could include a preliminary injunction or a temporary injunction that would keep the city from asking. So one of your questions was, are there procedural protections to the property owner? And the answer that I have for you is yes, and there are a lot. So the, the second question that you asked to us was, why use this kind of convoluted process? Answer again, because we have to, that's what state law requires. State law puts these obligations on inspectors. It puts the appeal to the city council, and it puts authorization on the city to take steps for enforcement. You also asked, why are we using such unusual or kind of funky language in designating what the community development target area looks like? And the answer to that is because we are quoting the statute. And I have for you this comparison between the statutory language and the UDO provisions for a community development target area, and you'll see they're identical. And we talked last time about why we pursue identical language, because it is enforceable in the courts. So the, the next question that you had for us, related to who, other than the city of Raleigh, other than what we are bringing forward, who has these provisions in their current code? And we determined that the jurisdictions on the slide have specific provisions that allow the same thing that, that is being brought forward to you. I, I will admit, the UNC School of Government is not a separate jurisdiction, but it is an entity that has advocated for the use of this new tool, the community development target area unsafe authority, to fight blight. And as you can well imagine, there are limited things that a jurisdiction can do to fight blight that a non-residential vacant and abandoned structures causes. And this is one of the tools that the School of Government has recommended and articulated in some of its provisions. You also asked, what about Fayetteville, what have, have they done? And Ms. Fulton is here because she spoke with the folks in Fayetteville and can tell you about that.
Thank you, Dottie. So we had discussions, as Dottie said, with all of these entities. And while Fayetteville cannot recall a specific case, because they have used this in multiple situations, they were able to successfully use this tool for schools and other large buildings that they had to tear down, to do something about because of their dilapidated condition. It's proven to be an effective tool for them, and other municipalities have used this tool in a limited situation. It is not an all-encompassing tool. Hendersonville also used it with much success, limited exclusively, as our tool will be, to non-residential uses.
So the next question that you posed to us is, what do vacant and abandoned mean? And you can, you'll see by the next couple of slides and what our comments were previously, this term, these terms are not defined in the unsafe building statutes. If, if we are looking at the UDO, you, you probably know that we have a section in the, in the UDO 12.1.1 that says, when there is a term that is not defined, we look to see if there's a, if it's a legal term, then we rely on legal authority or legal dictionaries, and otherwise, we're using the commonly accepted meaning of words. And so when we talk about abandoned, there is a case that quotes the dictionary that talks about what abandoned mean, to cease to assert an interest, right or title, with the intent of never again resuming or reasserting it. If you look at Fourth Amendment cases, and those are cases where somebody is conducting, typically a police officer conducting a search, those cases look at all the facts and circumstances to decide whether an owner intentionally gave up a property interest. So whether we use a Fourth Amendment standard or a dictionary, like the UDO probably is going to require us to do, you see that the standard is very high. And so it, what I perceive an inspector would do is come up with facts and circumstances to establish that someone has stopped having any interest or control in a building, to show that it's abandoned. So that's going to be a fact intensive inquiry, there'll have to be evidence to support of that decision.
So a question, the, the ordinance is proposed as vacant or abandoned. Now, I take your point about abandoned having that meaning, but vacant means empty.
Well, let me turn that over to Ms. Fulton.
So vacant is not defined by the statute, and there is not other, outside of the insurance context, case law defining what the word vacant means. So we go to statutory construction, where if the statute does not define what a term means, you go to the common definition of what the term means. And so we have for you three different definitions of what the word vacant means. Blacks Law Dictionary means empty, unoccupied. Cambridge English Dictionary, not filled, unoccupied, available to be used. And Oxford Dictionary, not occupied, empty. In the insurance context, minimum housing code cases have not defined the word vacant. We did a search to see how the word vacant has been used in minimum housing code cases. The insurance context, courts distinguish between a temporary absence, which I think goes to your question directly, and permanent removal therefrom, a permanent vacancy, and establishing what is and is not vacant.
So we would expect, again, there's, there is going to be an inspector who will have evidence, facts and circumstances, to show not only that some, a place or a, a non-residential structure is empty, but something along the lines of it's more than a temporary absence. And again, it's that vacant combined with the property causing blight, disease, vagrancy, and these safety concerns. So it's not simply a vacant building.
And there's one additional condition element to all of this. It is the dilapidated condition is causing, contributing to all of these, to one of these conditions. So there are five elements with this additional tool, that it is vacant or abandoned, it is non-residential, and that it's dilapidated condition is causing or contributing to one of these elements. So that dilapidated condition is one of those elements that we need to focus on.
So we also appreciate that we received a question yesterday about the role of the inspector. So we've added a couple of slides that are not on board docs. Where does the role of the inspector come from? It comes from statutory language. The statutory statutes require that the inspector take that first step with the declaration. The statutes require that the inspector take that second step in terms of the declaration and the issuance of the order. The statute requires that the inspector conduct the hearing. And the, the one piece that's interesting about the inspector conducting the hearing, it's going to be the inspector who's actually seen the unsafe conditions in the field. And so that inspector is really well-positioned to be able to assess the information that comes in during the hearing. Finally, the statutory scheme requires an appeal go to the city council. There was also a question about a provision in the new ordinance that is listed in part 11.5.5 emergency cases. And I wanted to point out that this comes directly from the existing UDO. And it, the changes merely get rid of the inspections director, who we no, no longer have, and replace it here with the Housing and Neighborhoods Director. And then just noting that who takes the steps to protect measures temporarily. It's not the inspections director, it's the city. And so some very minor changes. And I think that we have covered all of the questions that you asked. If there are any further questions, we'd be happy to field them.
Any questions?
I've got a question. We talked about a vacant or abandoned structure being unsafe. Are we talking about it as being unsafe physically, because we talked about dilapidation, but there's also a social impact of vacant and abandoned houses being unsafe to the public, whether it be crime, drugs, or any, any kind of negative activity? So I have a two-part question. One part is, is it just directed towards dilapidated, physically unsafe structures? And then the second part would, would be, does it touch to the social impacts of unsafe conditions? And if, if it doesn't, then where, or if any, place in the Obama, in the code or ordinance, would it be placed?
So the city is constrained by state law in the unsafe context. And properties that are dangerous to life, so again, the property issue, can be declared unsafe. In community development target areas, that's the only place in which the General Assembly gives additional powers to cities with vacant or abandoned buildings and with limited abilities to impose additional social-directed concerns. And those concerns are here, and these come directly from the statute. So that, that's pretty much, we're going as far as the statute allows us to go.
The question I asked yesterday, I didn't go to, I don't question an inspector being able to assess a building and see that it's blighted, it's diseased, it poses a danger to children, but that, there's a, what's the language about crime?
Attracts people. Can we go back one slide?
It tends to attract persons intent on activities that would, criminal activities. And I don't, inspectors have no expertise in that area. I'm not su, so an inspector can look at a building, looks physically dangerous, decide, well, it's vacant, that's what's called for in point A. And then B, in his opinion, or hers, attracts persons intent on criminal activities, and therefore I'm going to issue a citation. I, I'm not sure what expertise the inspector has to do that.
So the inspector's going to be gathering evidence to.
It doesn't say that.
To establish, that is, that is what is going to be required in terms of having the inspector issue the declaration. Because the inspector is providing a specific notice here that is writing down the conditions that the inspector has found that are subject to challenge in the hearing phase. And so the inspector may rely on any additional sources of information to establish blight, disease, vagrancy. The inspector's going to have expertise in, in safety, but all of the other information is going to come from a number of other sources. Nick, is there anything you'd like to add?
Absolutely. So coming from an enforcement perspective, enforcement, inspectors investigate cases after receipt of a complaint, and they go onsite and look at the property. And they are familiar with actual criminal investigate, criminal activity that may take place on the property. They, evidence could include a myriad of things, including during their inspection, they could see evidence of drugs, drug paraphernalia. They could see weapons, all of that is evidence of a crime or a criminal activity. They could receive police reports, SBI reports. In fact, some cases that the city has dealt with, they've received SBI reports that have led to convictions and assault cases. They could receive citizen reports of abuse, and during their inspection, have that information that letter, letter confirms that criminal activity is going on. Not all criminal activity is what you see on that front page of that newspaper. These properties are sometimes the property. These properties are sometimes the properties that you see back further down the wooded way. But what we are dealing with are these large, non-residential buildings and structures. The criminal activity includes, as I said, drugs, drug paraphernalia. Our inspectors are quite familiar with this. In fact, tomorrow, they'll be attending a landlord training program where they train landlords how to identify drugs and drug paraphernalia at their own properties. Our inspectors investigate cases after receipt of a complaint from the police, from citizens, but it takes that inspection to confirm and substantiate that there is, in fact, a violation, and to ensure that those property owners' due process rights are ensured.
I would probably add, too, that if it's been abandoned and vacant by the property owner, anybody that's there is probably trespassing as well. So I think you would, just in my experience out with this in the past, I think loitering, getting calls about people that are out of places shouldn't be, and now, I don't know how far that has to go. As Nicolette said, she has examples, too, of other criminal activities that could be at the property, but, and I'd also, before, as Dottie pointed out, before the hearing, the inspector has to give written notice, certified mail, that, and there's a series of things that they have to put in that written notice. And as Dottie pointed out, the more information they have in there, the more findings, they're putting the property owner on notice that these are the things that you need to come in and discuss. So it is to their benefit to put as much in there as they can.
Final point is, the current, the new proposed ordinance is much more restrictive and has a greater level of detail about what the inspector's obligations are than the current code. So by agreeing or recommending the change, you're recommending a more defined code provision.
I just want a couple of comments first. Thank you for the PowerPoint. It broke it down in a way that was more readily understandable to some of us, and that was very useful. I think, just a comment, I think this tool is really important for dealing with structures that just really are unsafe and causing more damage, you know, to surrounding areas than being useful. So I support this in that way, and also, being in line with state statute seems like important stuff. But just a comment, I'm not a lawyer, and I don't want to be a wordsmith, but attracting people intent on crime, I think it's attract and people intent that those terms don't quite sit well with me. I think if it was more focused on the crime and less on the people, might be useful. Something like harbors crime or criminal acts seems like it would be less subjective and less directed towards a person or people, and more focused on the actual event. And that may get into legal territory that I don't understand, but I just wanted to make that comment, and I feel like it might be useful if the commission agrees to just point out that it's important, as we draft the law, that we do it in a way that is equitable for all people, and is focused on the events, and not necessarily feeling, having the ability or potentially could be misconstrued to point out particular people.
I think there is a concern, absolutely, on the city's part, that we are sensitive about the rights of everyone. This particular language comes directly out of 160A 426B2, which uses or tend to attract persons' intent on criminal activities or other activities that would constitute a public nuisance. So the statute is forcing our hand. If we were writing on a clean slate, we agree, and we choose different language.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments before we entertain a motion?
I think that this would be improved by adding some language, that if the finding is that it appears to the inspector that this place, which is vacant, tends to attract persons' intent on criminal activities, that that finding be made in consultation with the police department.
How does that sit with what the language, how does that sit with language that needs to correspond to state law language?
It deviates from state statutory requirements, and our recommendation is to follow the state statute, but certainly to communicate with the inspections Department a suggestion that it use the police department whenever, as an administrative matter, whenever it is looking to make this declaration. And we can do that administratively.
So we can ask that as a part of administrative, part of the process, but you don't want it added to this particular piece of code?
That's right, because there may be other entities other than police department that should be consulted, like social services. And so we wouldn't want to pick or choose just, say, Raleigh Police, or the Sheriff's Department, or the U.S. Attorney's Office. We would want to give administrative guidance that's broad.
Any other thoughts before we entertain a motion?
I did ask about the power of the Department of Neighborhoods, what's the name of the Neighborhoods?
Housing Neighborhoods.
The Director is empowered in an emergency to order a building torn down, and is there an appeal from that?
So in that situation, the order goes to the property owner to evacuate, close, or demolish the property. The city is, at that point, going to install the temporary measures, but the Housing and Neighborhoods Director orders its immediate repair, evacuation, closing, or demolition to the property owner.
And so we can distinguish, I think of this, the best example I can think of is if a nuclear power plant is about to explode, you don't want somebody to have to take 10 days to fix it. You want someone, the ability to take temporary measures to protect against an imminent danger to life or safety. So this is a provision that is, should almost never be used, but it's got to be there in case there is a disaster in the looming. And so this, again, this is an emergency provision above and beyond what exists under general statutes. This comes from our charter and is use of general nuisance powers, but it's only that imminent danger, and it's only allowing these temporary measures to keep the thing from exploding while the process works.
Is someone ready to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve CP 1019, oh, sorry, TC 1219 unsafe buildings, and with a note that, if it pleases the commission, that we feel it's important, as these things are drafted, that language be carefully considered, to be focused on events and not necessarily particular people, and that also, we would ask that, I'm going to ask for some help here, but that you consider administrative directives in how to include law enforcement or others in the process of identifying the crime, or the-
The tendency.
The intent.
It's not crimes, it's tendency.
Tendency to crime.
Anything about consistency with the comprehensive plan?
Oh, yes.
We're getting there, we're getting there. We're trying to make sure we get all the-
Because it is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and additionally, is an important tool for maintaining our community.
Any further discussion? I just want to commend you guys for spending all that time, putting together all that information for us, and helping to educate us further. I think this will be a helpful tool in the city, so thank you for that.
Thank you for your time and attention, and for your really helpful questions.
All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Moving on, I believe we're at the part of the agenda where we review the minutes from previous meetings. Got to catch up. So does anybody have any issues with the draft of the September 24, 2019 Planning Commission meetings? I'll take a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, for the draft of the September 26, 2019 Committee of the Whole Meeting Minutes, any additions, concerns? Take a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on, I think we're at the Report of the Director, is that, no, Report of the So did we send out the lists, officially send out the lists of subcommittees? I sent you the list. I can't remember if it went out to everybody.
I'm not certain if it was broadcast or not. If it hasn't been, we'll do that today.
Okay.
I know our records have been updated, and the websites have been updated.
Oh, the website's updated, great. So if you have any interest in figuring out which committees you're on, you can check the website. So we'll get out some email to folks, just to confirm if that's helpful. All right, and I have nothing else at the moment. Do we have any reports from the members?
Just wanted to say, the Sir Walter Raleigh Awards was a fun event, and thank you to Jennifer, who also attended. Hope you enjoyed yourself. And I just also wanted to point out that our former Chair of the Planning Commission, Steve Schuster, who passed away recently, won an award, and that was very meaningful. Just wanted to recognize that. That's it, thank you.
And now we have the Report of the Planning Director.
Sure. Update on city council actions from October 1st, daytime and evening meeting. Five items were approved, Z 1919 West Street, that's the Rust Bus resounding, Z 1319 Lewisburg Road, CP 519 Ponterosa Service Road, CP 819 Briar Creek Parkway, and CP 919 DeBois Street. The public hearing for CP 2E 19, which is the growing successful Neighborhoods and Communities topic on the COP Plan update, was closed. The Historic Preservation and Arts and Culture sections were approved, and the remaining sections were deferred to November 6th. TC 1119 Shopping Centers was scheduled for public hearing this coming Tuesday at October 15th. Public hearing for TC Z 119 Spring Forest Road was continued to November 6th, and the public hearing for Z 1519 Six Forks Road was also continued to November 6th, and the case was referred to Growth and Natural Resources Committee.
Thank you. So pending items, we will have a text change committee meeting next week on the 15th of October. I see one item listed. Is there anything else that we know that might be coming there?
What is that?
It's the TC 1D 18 Omnibus List. So hopefully, we can process that out of there on next Tuesday, 4:00 p.m., October 15th.
And we will have a Transportation Committee meeting on the 22nd at 2:45, and continue discussing BRT planning, and I'm hoping I can get Jason Harden and Jason Myers to do my work for me on that.
So our next full Planning Commission meeting is the 22nd of October, and that same week, we have the Committee of the Whole Meeting on the 24th, and we do have one item in there so far. I think that's it. So any further discussion, comments? All right, meeting adjourned. Thank you, everybody.